Welcome to the March 11th Board of Selectmen meeting. All members are present. At 6:00 PM, we had an executive session in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategies regarding litigation involving Treska Brothers Sand and Gravel Inc. and Lehigh Northeast Cement Company. At this time, would you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have transmitting of Treasury warrants, 35, 35A, 36, and 36A. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. We're going to go to our 7 o'clock appointment, and that is a public hearing in regarding the acceptance of the streets that will be presented at town meeting for Mink Run Road and Pomford Road.
Yes, so this is a public hearing, so this would, anyone who is interested in offering comments, this would be the time to do so, as the Chair indicated. Mink Run Road, in its entirety, is being proposed for consideration at town meeting as a public way. It meets all the requirements. Our engineer, Paul Aluny, has reviewed and site inspected the area, and there's a memo in your packet that indicates he is recommending that the board submit it on to town meeting. Also, you'll see a map there that's enclosed describing the particular location. And then separately from that is a portion of Pomford Road, which is located off of Salem Street in Wilmington, and there's a portion of the road that is being recommended for acceptance as a public way.
And the Planning Board did vote unanimously 4-0 on both of them?
Yes, on both. So if the Board, after the hearing is closed, is so inclined to authorize this to go forward, then there are a set of Mylar drawings that the Board will sign after the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public, if they have any comments or questions in regards to the acceptance of the two roads. I don't know that we have to take them up separately, so if anybody... Okay, seeing none, how about anybody on the Board have any comments? Right? Is there a motion that we accept?
I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen vote to initiate the street acceptance process with respect to both a portion of Pomford Road and Mink Run Road in its entirety.
Okay, so let's have a motion to close the public hearing first.
So moved.
A motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Eaton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bendel. Any other discussion on closing of the public hearing regarding the acceptance of roads? All in favor? And it's unanimous. And now a motion to...
Initiate the street acceptance process for Mink Run Road in its entirety and a portion of Pomford Road.
Make a motion to accept this, described by the Town Manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. And we are well ahead of schedule. The next appointment is in regard to the annual town meeting warrant.
Yes.
Should we move forward to that? Mr. Hope?
At this point, the, as you know, the Board was provided with a copy of the annual town meeting warrant or drafted it last week, and I went through them in their entirety. I would note that the only change from the version that was provided last week is that we're including in the warrant for the Board's consideration what, an article that has been there now for the last three or four years, and that is an article that authorizes the appropriation from the Enterprise Fund for a rink. Again, as has been noted previously, this only authorizes the expenditure of funds in the event that the town was, were to acquire or construct a rink. There is no appropriation, but that is an article that's been in the warrant since 2015. Otherwise, the warrant remains as was presented last week, the majority of the articles being everything from the budget to various capital projects with, for petition articles.
So we're looking for a motion to accept and to close the warrant?
Yes.
This evening? With the addition of the article that you have, and that's with the new forms for us to sign?
That's right.
Okay. Right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Eaton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCoy, to close the warrant, and then we'll sign these after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
I would just note that there are 46 articles inclusive of the petition articles. First, under communications is correspondence from Valerie Gingrich. This is with regard to Mink Run Road and a portion of Pomford, which the Board just considered, but essentially she's noting that the Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of bringing these, directing the consideration of these back to the Board of Selectmen for adoption as accepted ways. Similar memo from Paul Aluny, Town Engineer, noting that he has also recommended these two streets, a portion of Pomford and all of Mink Run, for consideration by the Board Next, we have, under correspondence, a flyer from Valerie Gingrich. It was actually prepared by her office, including Ryan, the, in her office, the Conservation Agent. This is promoting April as Earth Day month, if you will, and there's a number of different activities that are slated for April. I'll just run off some of the dates here. Wednesday, April 10th, 7:00 to 8:30 PM, an event scheduled in the library, a large conference room, a primer, if you will, to property owners on wetlands, what they are, how they're regulated. That's a portion of the discussion. Second half of the discussion will be talking about some of the conservation land throughout Wilmington and the opportunities to utilize that for recreation. There's another event scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th, 3:00 PM. This would be Tuesday, Town Forest Walk. They'll meet at, on Andover Street, at the Trailhead, which is across from White Oaks Drive. Then on Saturday, the 27th of April, 8:30 AM, there's a Town Cleanup Day. Volunteers will meet at the DPW at 135 Andover Street, and there will be individuals to lead them in terms of various locations throughout town to pick up litter, and then DPW provides bags, and it's, everything is collected the following Monday. On April 27th, also at 1:00 PM, at the end of Blanchard Road, which is off of Shawshin, we have an area noted as Cormier Park, and Ryan will be there to provide a introduction to land stewardship, looking to encourage residents to come forward and talk about, and really assist the town in monitoring our conservation properties and also in spreading the word. I think that covers it for that one. Next, under correspondence is a letter to the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is with respect to construction, reconstruction of Route 38, and I'll just read it into the record. It's submitted by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. "As Chairman of the Town of Wilmington's Board of Selectmen, I am writing in support of the reconstruction project of the Route 38 Main Street Corridor from Route 62 South to the town line. This project is being considered by your Board for tip funding for federal fiscal years 2020 through 2024. This complete streets project will reduce traffic congestion along the corridor, improve safety and traffic operations, and provide healthy transportation alternatives for our community. This section of Route 38 serves as the conduit to the commercial center of the town with various retail, restaurant, and commercial land uses along the length. In addition, local community amenities along the corridor include the recently constructed Gentile Farm Recreation Facility, the Wilmington Dog Park, Middlesex Canal, and April Field at Town Park make this project particularly significant, particularly significant to the town. The project will be a vast improvement for pedestrians and bicycle connectivity between the adjoining residential neighborhoods, Wilmington Commuter Rail Station, and the previously mentioned local amenities. The town has funded design through 25% design phase, with Mass DOT funding the remaining design work to completion, given the roadway is under Mass DOT jurisdiction. As such, we are anticipating advancing expeditiously through the Mass DOT design development process. I respectfully ask that MPO to program this roadway improvement project in fiscal year 2020 to 24 tip, so that we may advance to construction as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration. Kevin A. Kyra, Chairman." We have also a letter from our legislative delegation directed towards this same project. I won't read this in its entirety, but essentially it covers the same issues. "Our full legislative delegation is in full support of the project," noting its significance as a connector road and also the connection with the various amenities. And it's signed by Senator Bruce Tar, State Representative David Robertson, and State Representative Kenneth Gordon. We have correspondence. This is another tip project. This is directed to Mass Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is for work at the intersection, Intersection Improvements at Lowell Street and Woburn Street. Again, this letter is from the Chairman. "As Chair of the, Chairman of the Town of Wilmington Board of Selectmen, I am writing in support of the Intersection Improvements Project at Lowell Street and Woburn Street. The project is being considered for your Board for tip funding for federal fiscal years 2020 through 2024. At its meeting on December 10, 2018, the Town's Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this intersection project as the project addresses significant longstanding safety issues and operational deficiencies at this critical intersection location. The intersection is of utmost importance economically to the Town of Wilmington, as this crossroad provides connections between commercial, industrial, and residential districts, as well as commuter access to Interstate 93 to the east and Route 38, Commercial Corridor and Wilmington Commuter Rail Stations to the west. The town has been diligent in securing design funding for this project with 100% design costs, set aside from traffic mitigation secured by the Town's Planning Board. Considering the commuting, community support, need, and available design funds, we will be advancing expeditiously through the MS, Mass DOT design development process. As such, I respectfully ask that MPO to program this critically, a critical intersection project in fiscal year 2020 to 24 tip, so that we may address, advance to construction as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration. Kevin A. Kyra." And then, once again, our legislative delegation has a similar letter that also outlines the same importance and features, signed by Senator Bruce Tar, State Representative David Robertson, and State Representative Kenneth Gordon. Next is correspondence from the Governor and Lieutenant Governor, and this is with regard to our Chapter 90 funding. The Governor is notifying communities that he is subject to bond authorization. $200 million proposed for bonding for Chapter 90, if, in fact, those funds are approved, as has been custom. Wilmington's portion of those funds would be $768,050. This is, the next one is a memo from me to the Board of Selectmen, just outlining the status of the inhabitant bylaw study committees, and also noting interest in potentially serving on a town meeting review committee. Based upon the direction that came from your last meeting, I asked our Town Clerk, Tina Conway, to reach out to members currently serving on the inhabitant bylaw committee as to their interest in going forward. And I would just note that Frank Oliveri and John Romano are interested in continuing to serve both on the inhabitant bylaw committee, as well as potentially serving on a town meeting review committee. Dan Stewart wishes to step down from the inhabitant bylaw committee and is not interested in serving on a town meeting review committee. And Dan Ardito has expressed interest in continuing to serve on the inhabitant bylaw committee, but is not seeking to participate in the town meeting review committee. I also note in the, in this memo that the inhabitant bylaw committee will be reconvening. It has been on a bit of a hiatus, a combination of situations there that led to the committee not meeting, but the expectation is that they will reconvene within the next month or two and be looking to address Section 5 of the inhabitant bylaws. They have gone through the other sections, but will be looking to have recommendations for the next annual town meeting in 2020.
Mr. Chairman.
Could I say, Jeff, just, I reached out and talked to Dan Ardito. Dan Ardito, I appointed him as a member of the Board to serve on the bylaw committee, and I did tell him that we would basically try and tell, like Mr. Romano, basically roll everything in together. And to be totally honest, the town meeting review committee, I don't really think's gonna take more than a couple of meetings, if that. Just on that segment, when are we gonna decide to do a town meeting? I would imagine the bylaw's gonna be more intense, because council at the time was supposed to give us some background information, so he will serve, but it's gonna be rolled into one. It's not two separate committees. He didn't, and he's a super, super wonderful guy. Thank you.
Just a point at that occasion, so Mr. Oliveri, Mr. Romano, and Mr. Ardito might be interested in continuing.
Yes.
Okay.
And, members of the Board, while I have the opportunity, and I, Tina was good enough to be at the last meeting, and I neglected to make note of the fact that our new town clerk, Christine Tome Conway, is here this evening, goes by Tina, but just wanted to welcome her to the Board and give you an opportunity to meet her.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Next, under correspondence is a memo from me to the Board, just noting the training that will be coming up, scheduled for April 11th, 7:00 PM, here at the Town Hall and the auditorium. As you will recall, when KP Law presented their services, they noted that they would provide some amount of training at no additional cost to the town, and the Chairman has asked that I work with them to arrange training for both the open meeting law, as well as the public records law. So the Boards and Committees of the Town have been notified of this training and strongly encouraged to participate. In addition, our Department Heads have also been advised of this training, and the expectation is that they will participate as well. The training, again, it starts at 7:00 PM, but Mark Rich will provide an overview of both of those laws, and I'm sure there'll be a number of questions.
Any question? Okay, well, what do you?
Yeah, is, this training, is this mandatory, or is this voluntary?
It's voluntary. And town, town residents can attend it as well.
Next is correspondence memo from me to the Board. This is a follow-up from a request that was made at a previous meeting. The question was posed as to whether, in prior instances, the Board of Appeals has reconvened, or at a subsequent meeting of the Board of Appeals, has discussed the substance of a vote that was taken at a prior meeting. I did contact the former clerk to the Board of Appeals, as she was the one that really participated in those, and she did note that, in particular, for cases involving 40B, that council would be involved in working with the Board of Appeals on drafting the decision, similar to what took place with the 362 Middlesex Ave decision, Town Council in these prior cases would look to reflect the basis for the decision that the Board of Appeals made at a particular decision, and then at a subsequent meeting, the Board of Appeals would meet, not to change their decision, but to simply confirm that the substance of the decision as articulated by Town Council reflected what they intended. Next is a letter from me to Mr. and Mrs. Richard Delant. They are the individuals who have purchased the Restucha rink, and the letter is basically expressing an interest in meeting with them to discuss their plans going forward for the rink.
Do you want to mention that you had a meeting with, because at our last meeting on the new business, I brought up that we would, we should have a meeting with the youth hockey and the, and Friday?
Just right. So I did meet with representatives from youth hockey, as well as representatives from high school hockey, to discuss with them what their current situation is. It sounds like, essentially, things are stable at the moment. There are still, you know, concerns about, I think the biggest concern is just the unknown of what the new owners have in store. They've been working with Mr. Rotundo, who continues to be the rink operator, and it seems to be a cooperative relationship for the moment, but their, you know, biggest concern is what happens going forward. I think clearly, it's fair to say that the youth hockey is under a fair amount of stress because of the cost of ice time and the limited hours of ice time. You know, many of the kids are moving on and looking at other options, so we'll continue to stay in touch with them and hope to be able to work constructively to provide some additional ice time and, you know, at prices that are competitive.
I think that'd be nice, if you're gonna tell them, bring them to the table.
Great idea.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have correspondence from the Mass State Lottery Commission. We get these periodically. This one in particular deals with Quickmart 206 Balladvale Road. Presuming they mean Balladvale Street. This is, notice that Quickmart is, is, given the option of receiving a, essentially a monitor that would be installed in their place of business, which, as I understand, it provides information about keynote and, as well as some advertising. Essentially, the way this works is if the Board of Selectmen has any objections to this being installed, they have 21 days from the date of receipt of this letter, which was March 6th, to express the opposite, that opposition. Otherwise, this would be implemented. We have reached out to the Police Chief, Mike Begonis, and he notes, upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the keynote-to-go request for the following address.
And just let me ask, any members of the Board, do they have any objections to this?
No.
Okay.
Next, under correspondence, invitation from the Wilmington Minutemen Company, and they are inviting the Board to the installation of officers ceremony on Sunday, March 17th, starting at 2:00 PM at their headquarters, located on the grounds of the Joshua Harndon Tavern, 430 Salem Street. Any questions? You can contact Frank West, and he provides his number. Next is correspondence from Dan Veerman. This was an email that was provided to me. I'll read it, because this matter will be considered later in the evening. "As you are aware, I am a member of the Wilmington Board of Appeals. It has just recently, has just recently and informally been brought to my attention that on March 13th, 2019, the Fourth of July Committee will be applying for a special permit to locate the Fourth of July carnival to the property known as the former Swain School Site on Middlesex Ave for this year's upcoming Independence Day celebration. This area is directly across the street from my residence at 131 Middlesex Avenue. Although I am not sure if I am technically a direct abutter, I certainly may be and clearly live within 300 feet of the area. When this issue first arose years ago, I contacted Town Council, who informed me that due to the proximity of my residence to the area in question, the safe course of conduct would be to accuse myself from hearing the committee's special permit application, since a direct abutter would be presumed to have a financial interest in the matter. Although I do not believe the carnival would necessarily benefit or disadvantage me financially due to the location of my house to the area, I was advised that the presumption of a financial interest is a matter of law, if not fact. He advised me to communicate my conflict to my appointing authority, namely the Board of Selectmen, and that they have, on three previous occasions, decided to waive my conflict after proper deliberation and decision. Toward that end, please forward this communication to the Board of Selectmen. Should they decide to entertain this issue at their next meeting, deliberate, and take such actions, please feel free to contact me if needed. Daniel J. Veerman." And then, under correspondence, you have information from Verizon. This is a packet of information that includes the various channel lineup and sample bill. This is something that they're required by law to send out on an annual basis. This is something that they're required by law to send out on an annual basis.
Okay, and that concludes communications?
Yes.
We're on to Board to Consider.
Board to Consider, again, this first issue is Board to Consider.
Before we go any further, Mr. Eaton.
Madam Secretary, I request that you note my recusal in the minutes, as my prior professional relationship with Attorney Veerman would create, at the very least, a appearance of a conflict should I participate in discussions relative to his participation in the described petition.
The board is being asked to consider waiving the conflict of interest that Mr. Veerman may have. It's in accordance with Chapter 268A, Section 20B, relative to an application for a special permit by the Fourth of July Committee. The Fourth of July Committee will be coming before the Board of Appeals on Wednesday evening.
Okay. I'll make a motion to waive the restriction to allow Mr. Veerman to participate on the special permit for the Fourth of July Committee.
Second that motion.
Is the motion made and seconded? Any discussion? Hearing done?
Mr. Chair, I would just note that, in the past, when the board has considered this, the reference that has been used is that the ownership of the property near the proposed carnival site is not so substantial as to likely affect the impartial, impartially acting on the July 4th Committee's special permit.
Okay. To add to the motion, you want that worded?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Done. Fine with her. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Let me just grab Mr. Eaton.
Next, under Board to Consider is closing of the warrant and signatures, which I believe was already addressed.
We already did that.
Followed by signing of the license with the Wilmington Farmers Market. The board would need to take a vote to authorize entering into this license with the Farmers Market.
Move to grant their request?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Next, under Board to Consider is a request that Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in blue during the month of April in observance of autism awareness.
Move to grant their request?
Second. By Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous.
Next is, under Board to Consider, vehicle safety measures, which would, the board is being asked to address from the intersection at Shawshin Ave and Hopkins Street to the Bilreka Town Line. There is correspondence here from Police Chief Mike Begonis, noting that, in response to a request on my part, he and the DPW took a look at the area, essentially from Shawshin School to the Bilreka Line. There have been a number of accidents there, and the recommendations that came out of that are really twofold. One is certain sign, at stop signs, being placed at Grace Drive, where it intersects with Shawshin, Melody Lane, where it intersects with Shawshin, Reed Street at Shawshin, and Harold Ave at Shawshin. Those are actions that the Board of Selectmen can take via a vote. And also, in addition to that, there are, the police chief is recommending changes in the location of certain speed signs to, apparently, the school zone that has been noted there for some years, I guess since 2006 or thereabouts, was not officially adopted. And so, one of the steps that needs to take place here going forward is to make that official, and also to change the location of certain stop signs, I mean, certain speed signs as they overlap. If you are familiar with the area, you'll note that, when you're coming in from Bilreka, for example, there's a 35 mile an hour speed limit, but then there's, as you approach the school zone, there's a 20, 20 mile an hour speed sign, and similar signs exist on the approaches in the other directions, and there's a bit of an overlap. So, as it's described in this correspondence, and I believe there's a map that members have that reflect the actual changes in locations, the recommendation is to move the speed signs to eliminate that overlap. So that process, the board would need to authorize a change, and then this would go to the Mass DOT for their approval.
Okay, well, we'll take them up in two separate parts, because the stop signs are regulated by the town, does not have to go to MassDOT.
Right.
I'm looking out at the chief. And so, why don't we take that up first, to put in stop signs at Harold Ave, Reed Ave, Melody Lane, and Grace Drive. Is there a motion?
I'll move to endorse the suggestions from the, recommendations from the police chief.
Motion to, so, recommendations, second, so, motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton regarding the stop signs. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay, next, we're going to go to the speed limit adjustment, because this vote will then have to go to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for finalizing that adjustment and the speed limits on the streets. So I'll look for a motion to go as was recommended by the police department and the chief. Motion by Mr. McCoy, second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest, after the meeting, that the board can sign off on these.
Okay. Because there's a number of things we have to sign for that, so we'll do that after the meeting. Yes.
Is that for the speed limits?
No, for the school zone. There's some adjustments to the school zone along Hopkins and. And is that going to MassDOT as well? It's something that, because of the way it's situated, it doesn't have to go to MassDOT. Something that you, under your purview, can make the change under our suggestion. Okay. Those changes are also noted on the map. Okay, we'll have a motion made for the school zone, for the change.
Make a motion as described by the police chief.
Which is in our packet.
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, chief.
And finally, under Board to Consider is a request from Michael Murphy to fly the donate life flag at the Wilmington Town Hall. You'll recall, last year, he came in and was asking that this be done during the month of April, and so he's making a similar request again this year, and also looking to be able to set up a table at the Town Hall on Monday, April 1st, to be staffed, so to speak, by volunteers to answer any questions about the organ donor program.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton, to fly a flag for National Organ Donor Month. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. That's it for Board to Consider?
Yes.
Okay, on to public comments. And public comments is just what it says, public comments. You can certainly ask questions during public comments, and we will answer them if they're pertaining to the agenda. If there are questions that aren't pertaining to the agenda, it may be considered out of the open meeting, but if my colleagues wish to do that, and in response to the questions, they can certainly do that, and I just caution them in that regard. Okay, for public comments, does anyone wish to speak on public comments? Yes. Can you just state your name and?
Gary DeCarmo, 46 Swain Row. In regards to the open meeting and public records training, I think we'd move the town to make that mandatory for at least managers of each department, so that there is no conflict, there wouldn't be any conflict on determining, determining what the rule is, regulation is, or whatever, but to make it mandatory, be more comprehensive.
The department heads have been directed to be at that meeting, so department heads will, volunteers, we certainly can't necessarily mandate that they attend, but we certainly strongly encourage that they will, and we will also be having a separate session with the clerical staff, who, in many cases, are responsible for doing the postings and so on.
What we might want to consider is maybe, we're having it in the evening, so that the public can attend too, but we may want to consider, next time, having it during the day, and that way, the management staff can attend it on a mandatory basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the public comments? Yes.
Good evening. Kevin McDonald, Wilmington resident. I've been going through the town budget, and I've been going through annual reports. I've mentioned at previous meetings that the town of Wilmington is incorporated, and it's incorporated as a nonprofit organization. I have a few comments tonight, but before I do that, I'd like to just read a small section from the annual report. It's actually a portion that's on page one. It's the mission statement of the town Wilmington. And the portion that I'd like to read is this. Principles of honesty, fairness, dependability, and compassion must govern the actions of the officials and the employees of the town. And the reason why I bring this up is, as I go through the budget, as I go through the annual reports, and I, as I hear talk of all this free cash that has been built up, and as I look at the real estate transaction sales, and as I look at the taxation of various real estate parcels, particularly one that comes into mind is the apartment building in the center of town, on the other side of 62, diagonally across from where Big Joe's is, I believe it's called Metro Station, Went Burlington Ave. It was recently sold to an entity out of San Francisco, and it was like, I don't know the exact numbers right now, it was like $24 million or something like that. And I take a look at their tax bill, and it's not even anywhere close to that. And I go to the town's website, and I'm reading a little bit about Proposition 2 1/2, and come to find out that Proposition 2 1/2 is directly tied into the value of the town. And I bring that up because I've also looked at other parcels that have been purchased, and some things are very suspicious, especially when somebody buys swampland for like, close to $2 million on Amesworth Road, that you can't do anything with. And these sales drive up the value of the town, and it just seems like it's affecting the taxation of everybody in town, because if the tax levy of the town is able to go up 2 1/2 percent, and it's relative to the value of the town, this concerns that, number one, the Board of Assessors, every single member on the Board of Assessors is directly receiving income from the town of Wilmington, whether it's through retirement or direct salaries. It seems to be raising questions of a conflict of interest. Why would the Board of Assessors be in conflict of interest like that? As a matter of fact, the town assessor is actually on the Board of Assessors, so if you needed to appeal, or question, or go to an authority above the town assessor, to, say, the Board of Assessors, you're actually finding that the assessor is actually on the board. And so, I would like this board to look into that, as to whether or not that's a conflict of interest, and if it's leaving the town in a position of liability. Recently, I just learned of a lawsuit in Nebraska where there were six people who were imprisoned, and it got through DNA testing, it was found out that they were imprisoned improperly, and there was evidence that was suppressed. And an entire county, because of the rural nature of that area, bore the responsibility of a result of a lawsuit, and people's property taxes went up tremendously. And I think it's important for people in Wilmington to understand that, although the town of Wilmington is an entity in itself, the taxpayers bear responsibility of lawsuits when there's a liability that gets put on the town. And what's happened in Nebraska is, a lot of those people are farmers, and they can't afford that tremendous tax increase. It was like, I think it was like a $28 million lawsuit. And so, I'm just envisioning a storm coming, where people are being overtaxed, there's this equation of taxation through the valuation of the town that's really not true and honest. As I, as I read this mission statement, the principles of honesty definitely get called into question, and certainly the statement about compassion, when people are being forced out of town. I take a look at the registry of deeds, and I see the list of foreclosure notices and foreclosures, and it's a real concern. And, Mr. Kara, you are the chairman, and it's your responsibility to set forth the agenda. And, you know, as I look through the agenda, the agendas that you've set, I don't really see anything substantial that's really dealing with helping people, in the sense that saving them from their houses, and maybe having a meeting where we question, why are you taxing people this amount of money when you've never come out and looked at their house to see if the roof needs replacing, the windows and doors need replacing, and whatever other problems exist on a house? You just rubber stamp this tax bill, it just goes up, and it's just, it's not an accurate, it's not a genuine, real taxation. And I think the town may see a storm coming their way of lawsuits, and I think the people of Wilmington at best start thinking about this, because they are the ones that will really bear the brunt of a lawsuit if something extraordinary comes down, especially from industrial property owners. You see that a rink just got purchased, and there's been questions tonight about the fact that we're questioning, what's going to happen with youth hockey, what's going to happen with high school hockey? As you know, I put forth an article at the town meeting, and it was tailored specifically to basically copycat what was done at the Essex Agricultural High School, where private industry came in with the aid and the vision of the superintendent there. What he did was, he came up with a plan where he invited private industry to come in, and the deal was this, that private industry would build two rinks, and they would run the rinks, and the high school would get its entire ice time for free. And after 20 years, the school would have ownership of those rinks. I pretty much put an article at, in town meeting. I pretty much put an article in Town Meeting that pretty much copycapped that. But because we have a town moderator who basically abused his authority and kicked me out, it never went to vote. So my question to you is, what are you willing to do in terms of agenda setting that deals with improper taxation, taking a look at the fact that places are being sold for tens of millions of dollars over what they're being taxed, and dealing with this potential storm of a liability lawsuit that could be happening? Are you willing to set an agenda item to really deal with the Proposition 2 and 1/2 issue here?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your comments. And we'll take that under consideration. We'll take it under consideration. Thank you for that. Anyone else wish to speak on the public comments? Okay, thank you. On to new business. To my colleagues, which to speak on the new business, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have intentions of talking about Mr. Veerman and make a motion. So Ms. Eaton, you might want to leave the room. I just, if I want you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just take a second. Thank you. Relative to Mr. Veerman, even though the vote has been taken on 362 Middlesex Ave., I believe then and now it still warrants a go into executive session to have a discussion with Mr. Veerman. I move that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen call an executive session and have the Town Manager properly advertise date and give summary of entering into executive session with Mr. Daniel Veerman, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. The dates could be worked out between the Town and Mr. Veerman. Dates as follow. March 14th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21, 25, 26, 27, or 28. I want to give ample opportunity for the Town and Mr. Veerman. Also, I'd like to include in the motion that the Board of Selectmen intend to meet in executive session in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, and 1, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against Mr. Veerman regarding, regard to matters associated with his involvement as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and deliberation in respect to the application for a special permit to construct substance abuse detoxification facility at 362 Avenue in Wilmington.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Having no second to the motion, the motion fails. We're on the new business now, Mr. McCoy. Yeah. Right now, it's the new business for the Board of Selectmen to be discussing. Thank you, Mr. The, no, we already had the public comments where you had your opportunity to speak. Thank you. Okay, anything else on the new business? Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Dwight Storer. He's a Wilmington, longtime Wilmington resident and Air Force Korean veteran, and we appreciate his service. And I know he's been around the town a long time and he really enjoys making model airplanes. And I appreciate him donating some to the town this past week. So a shout out to Mr. Storer.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, you're on, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments. Can I understand how the vote went? That's fine. I just, well, maybe this isn't the proper time to do this, but you know, it's just that comments that are made relative to what he states out there in his action. So I made the motion unfortunately, so I'll just, I'll just end it right there. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Eaton?
Just real quick, I wanted to congratulate Officer Naftal of the Police Department for his marriage to Nicole Capizoli on this past Friday. So Officer Naftal is, is a great guy. He's done a lot working for the town and he's a veteran as well. And I believe he just, Chief, you can confirm this, I think he just returned from a deployment too, didn't he?
Yes, and then redeployed.
Yeah. So I just want to express my best wishes for a long and happy life to Nick and Nicole.
And just regards to what you had mentioned, Mr. McCoy. In, in the packet that we received a few weeks ago from, from Town Council, he outlined what it would be in order for removal of a, of a person on a volunteer committee. And that, you know, free speech is allowed under the First Amendment and that there are certain criteria for removal. And none of those that I believe have, have been met. And that being a failure of meeting, missing meetings, behavior at meetings, retaliatory behavior at meetings, if you're coming impaired or falling asleep at meetings. There's a whole list in that regard for removal of an individual from a voluntary board. So I don't see as Mr. Veerman has fallen under any of those outlined issues from, from Town Council. And as for some good news, well, I don't know that it's great news, but half good, half bad. We'll do the good stuff first. Coach of the Year from Commonwealth League is Greg Bendel from the basketball. So congratulations. Got Coach of the Year, Mr. Bendel. An unbelievable record, 19 and 5. Last time that was achieved was 1983, right?
I won't tell you where I was in 83. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
But now's the most wins, right?
It was, I'm just fortunate to be surrounded by a lot of good people and a lot of good players. Thank you.
And that's, that's all I have. The new business. Yep.
Can I just respond to the comments that you made about Mr. Veerman, if I could?
I'm just going to step out.
All right. I'll just be two minutes. I'm not looking for Mr. Veerman to be removed. I just want us to have at least a civil discussion in executive session. And let me go on and say this. Mr. Veerman stated on a couple of times, this is what I wanted to talk about in executive session, but that's not going to happen. Mr. Veerman stated on a couple of times when asked about 362 Middlesex Ave., some folks thought he'd be in conflict. Mr. Veerman stated he filed with the State Ethics Commission. He also mentioned more than one time, more than one time that he was cleared. If that's so true, I would love to see the paperwork, number one, and just like what we did tonight, I had no problem voting for Mr. Veerman to participate relative to the July 4th discussion as, as his appointing authority. I don't remember ever seeing anything of a disclosure saying he filed with the State Ethics. I assume that if he did, I would like to see that, number one. And number two, we never received anything. You know, I think that's very important, you know? And I understand people have the right of freedom of free speech. I think you can only use that so far. But you know, if you're going to be discriminated against, you know, call certain individuals, whatever, you know, that's be like, for example, calling individuals junk, drug addicts that are junkies. Well, you know, I don't consider myself a drug addict or a junkie. I take medicine to stay alive and millions of other people do so. Would that consider myself a junkie or a drug user? You know, so, you know, there's some comments that were made, but at the end of the day, more importantly, I just want to have a discussion, no intentions of removing Mr. Veerman. I think it warranted it. I still do now. But I would love to see something from the Town Clerk's Office if he had a file with the Ethics Commission that he said it on more than one occasion, at least two times. I believe November, I believe February 14, 2018, a resident asked him that question and he said he was cleared. I have yet seen anything of that unless I was not here. So through you, Mr. Chairman, the manager, I would like to see any correspondence relative to anybody, not only Mr. Veerman, to be fair, any individual that serves on the Board of Appeals, if they filed any type of conflict of interest, anything had to do with 362 Middlesex Ave. And if they have, I think we as the appointing authority, just like we saw tonight demonstrated before the Fourth of July Committee, I mean Fourth of July application before the Board of Appeals, there's no difference, Mr. Chairman.
And you do realize 362 Middlesex was voted for denial?
Oh, no.
And that the Board of Selectmen will back that denial vote as well as Town Council?
I totally agree. And that's what I said in my opening statement. I know the vote was taken, but I still believe then, as I do now, it warranted discussion. I'm not looking to remove Mr. Veerman. I believe it warranted discussion, plain and simple. That's all I think I need to say.
Thank you.
Okay, on to, on to important dates.
Yep. Thank you.
There was a question about reasonable accommodation and that the Board, they were going to send it to its Board. Do you know anything about that?
No, it was voted denial at the Board of Appeals and that's where, that's where it is.
I'm glad, I'm glad. But what I'm trying to tell you is.
Probably go to court at this point in time, but it's done.
That's what I'm saying.
It's done. Thank you.
If it's going to court.
Under important dates, March 19th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant for the annual Town Meeting. It will be held at the Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 PM. March 25th, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 PM. April 3rd and April 6th are brush drop off events, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 3rd, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM on the 6th. Also on the 6th is the Rabies Clinic Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00. April 8th, last day to register to vote at the annual Town Election and Town Meeting. Town Clerk's Office will be open from 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM. April 8th is a Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. April 10th is another brush drop off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 10th, the Wetlands Resource Area and Conservation Land Library Lecture at the Memorial Library, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. April 13th, another brush drop off, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 15th, Town Offices are closed for Patriots Day. April 16th, Town Forest Nature Walk, 3:00 PM. April 17th and 8, and April 20th, brush drop off. April 20th is also Little League Opening Day Parade. April 20th, the Easter Egg Scramble, Town Common, 11:00 AM. April 22nd, Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 PM. April 24th, brush drop off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 27th, Spring Town Cleanup Day, 8:30 AM. Also on the 27th, Land Stewardship Program Introduction Workshop, 1:00 PM. April 27th is another brush drop off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then Town Elections on April 27th, polls open at 8:00 AM, close 8:00 PM. May 4th is the annual Town Meeting, High School Auditorium, 10:30 AM. And again, the reminder that May 5th is the plastic bag ban taking effect.
Okay, any other important dates missing? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, second one by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's it. Good night.